City council meeting, I would ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Brock, councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Invite everyone to do the pledge of allegiance. Now you have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, can we excuse Councilman Brock for this council meeting?
A second.
Second.
Move to second and end discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so move. We're gonna approve the agenda for the consent agenda. It'll be the approval of the minutes from March 19th, study session, April 16th, study session, April 16th, council meeting, May 7th, special study session, May 14th, budget study session.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved to second, any questions? Discussion, I mean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is approved. So skipping back to number five, the presentation is going to be pushed to after the city reports.
Yes, at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so it'll be it, so we're moving that. Next, we will hear from, we have a petition from Mitchell Fitch, the hearing regarding denial of the solicitor's license. You went up to the mic.
It's Michael, by the way.
Michael, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, oh, sorry, we have Mike, Mitchell.
Who would like to present?
Can you just?
I can introduce you to give a background.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Mr. Fitch submitted an application to the city for a peddler's license on May 11th of this year. That application, in submitting that application, one of the questions he was asked is, have you ever been convicted of a felony or misdemeanor? He checked no on the application. Background check conducted by the police department identified that he in fact had a misdemeanor conviction in the city approximately five years ago. Based upon that misrepresentation on the application, the recommendation was that the permit be denied, which it was. Clerk sent a certified letter on May 14th that his application hadn't been denied. In accordance with his rights, he requested hearing under the ordinance. He did submit a request three days later for a hearing. He's here before you this evening requesting an appeal of that denial.
Okay. Yeah, just a quick question. So Mr. Fitch, do you have any violations currently?
Currently, no, I did not, sir.
Okay. And can you give us some insight as to why you did not check yes on the question?
Sure. I was under the understanding that I didn't have to. It was five years ago and my attorney let me go through a diversion program. I was, I thought it was expunged. I believe it is. It is expunged, but you guys are still able to see it. So it was honestly just an honest mistake of not checking that box. It was five years ago, I believe. I've matured quite a bit since then. I've been enlisted in the U.S. Air National Guard for three years now. And I'm very excited about starting this small business. That's my goal. And my education is to start a business and own one, one day.
Okay.
You said your education, five years ago, you look so young already. So you probably, were you underage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When you say peddlers, can you be more specific on what type of business you want to?
Yes, I'm hoping to get a solicitor's license so I can go door to door. That's not the only way of marketing I'm gonna be able, that I plan on doing. But within Lathrop Village, I hope to go door to door and start a, my name is Tidy Up and Sell. It's a cleaning business where I'd go in and clean somebody's house and also offer to sell the things that they don't, that they might not need or want anymore and assist them with that.
Do you do this anywhere else?
No, I started within my house and we were able to sell quite a bit of stuff, so.
Okay.
And I consider myself a hard worker and a good cleaner, so.
Well, I mean, I think we all appreciate you fighting. You know, the denial, that does show some resilience. The question, I guess, is, okay, so you're saying that you wanna do cleanup, you wanna do cleaning services.
Correct.
Per home. Are you, do you have to get certification in that as well? I mean, your cleaning products and all of that?
You're able to get certified within the cleaning business. It's not a requirement. They're really just making a bet on the person who is, who will be doing the cleaning.
Okay, alrighty. So no certifications yet. Are you Lathrop Village, you're a resident? Have you, how long have you lived in Lathrop?
Twenty-two years, ma'am.
So you were raised here?
Correct.
Because you don't look bored at twenty-two, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question. So do you have any neighbors that would submit any sort of testimonial on your behalf regarding your work ethic?
Absolutely. I have two close neighbors that I've lived on the same street with.
Okay, they're aware that you wanna start this business?
Correct.
They do, okay.
Any other questions, concerns?
Basically, you said that you thought that it was expunged. You thought it was off the record and so you didn't see any need to put it on there.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So city attorney, we have to make a motion for this or to approve or deny? I don't really see.
The request here is to, is the appeal from a decision to deny his peddler's license. So the, I believe the motion he's seeking or the request he's seeking is to set aside the denial and issue him a permit. So the council has the ability to grant him the relief he's requested or deny him the relief he's requested.
We do that now, not under the action request?
No, you could do that now. I don't believe it's listed as an action item.
No, it's not. So I will take a motion rather or not to approve the denial or deny the denial?
Uphold the denial.
Oh, okay.
Rescind the denial.
Reverse?
I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the correct.
I'll make a motion to rescind the denial.
A second.
It's been moved to second. Any question, I mean, any discussion?
Yeah, is there, can I address the applicant? Do you have any social media activity regarding this business right now?
No, I'm in the process of making a website and created some flyers, but nothing on social media yet.
Okay, so you haven't, it hasn't been activated? You haven't started passing flyers out?
No, sir.
And/or on social media?
No.
Okay.
So you waited until this actually, you found out what was going to be the result?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how many hours are you working with the Air National Guard right now?
I have to report one weekend a month, so within that weekend.
So National Guard Reserve, that's where you're currently in?
Up at Selfridge.
Okay, Selfridge.
And you've been doing that for three years consistently?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to mention that, just in terms of procedure and process, that the ordinance is a little bit vague in some areas. So my recommendation is that I work with the attorney to have some additional language drafted that could be more specific in terms of what our requirements are and what that process should be.
Okay, and so hold that for a second because I need to see, or you know, is there any more discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All opposed? So the motion carries.
Thank you.
So you're welcome.
Welcome and good luck.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
The name of your business again is?
I just came up with it, Tidy Up and Sell.
Tidy Up and Sell.
And Sell.
So is it more organizational or is it cleaning?
I would happy to do organization within really whatever they'd like me to do.
Okay.
Maybe one day you can come back and give us, after you get your, get it all laid out, give us a presentation.
Sure.
Give me a card.
Good luck.
That's why I keep the garage closed. So you were saying about tightening up the, tightening up the ordinance? Yes. But also, should we put a moratorium on it until we do that?
Again, we kind of briefly discussed this in the study session. I think it's something we could have for first reading by next regular meeting.
Okay.
Our ordinance is still functional. It's a little cloudy in some areas, but you know, as you experienced tonight, the applicant has a right to come and present their case if there are some questions to council. So I don't, I mean, we certainly can do a moratorium. We haven't drafted one. You could do that at your next regular meeting or schedule.
But you'll have it at our next regular, I mean, at our study session.
We'll also have the revised ordinance.
Okay, then yes, we will. And no, we will not do it. Okay. So next, we consider the approval of the disbursements reports. First one is gonna be from April 1st, 2018 to April 15th, 2018, of a total of $48,793.06. The next one will be from April 16th, 2018 to April 30th, 2018, in the total of $519,827.74. Any questions, concerns on the, or you might wanna make a motion, I guess.
Motion that we approve?
Second.
It's moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? The disbursements reports are approved. And next will be the consideration of accepting of the department reports. That would be for the police department, the, what else?
Zoning permits.
Zoning.
Or permits.
Parks and Rec, DDA. And permits and what we have now are the enforcements in here, which I thoroughly appreciate, enforcements in here. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Second.
I did make a motion.
I made a motion. Now you can second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
We have a little discussion.
See how fast I try to fly through that?
Yeah, and I'm with you on that too. But just wanted to make note that there are two grand openings. One, June 1st, Friday, June 1st, Angelique's Fashion. And then one on July, the food truck begins Friday, July 20th. But I just wanted to mention that grand opening. And I had a quick question for the police and I meant to ask earlier. There was something in the paper last week that said 11 Mile Southfield is one of the deadly. Did you guys see deadly's areas for crashes and all of that? I just, I just didn't know that.
And can you explain to everyone that turning west off of Southfield to get on to westbound 696 is not a two lane? It's a one lane. The one going south onto Southfield Freeway is a two lane.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have been, as part of the traffic crash studies, we have been some of the most dangerous intersections, which is why we revamped the entire intersection several years ago and it actually has decreased our injury accidents there, noting that eastbound can't turn, northbound onto Southfield Road has cut down on major injury accidents. So we're trying to get that number down.
So it's cut down, but we're still, I think they say like number five.
You also have to understand too, just by sheer volume of traffic that goes through that intersection, we're probably in the top 10 intersections of just volume of traffic. So naturally, we're gonna be a little bit higher than normal anyway.
Wow, we need to take advantage of that somehow.
Oh, I'm like, how, okay, gotcha.
We need to put some business signs up here or something. That, I mean, that was amazing to me because.
I like where the city lawyer thinks.
If you're on the map, okay, that's all I had.
So I did, I, we did discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the department reports have been accepted, approved. So now we come to the point to discuss items that are not on our agenda. And if anybody would like to discuss something, so please come up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name is Chuck Batchwell. I live at 17606 Sunnybrook. And my question is, why do I have to live with this? I've lived with it for a long time. I've been to the council, I've been to Ken Martin, I've talked to Scott Baker, I've talked to Jim, the enforcement officer, everybody, and nothing happens. That's next to my house. I've been a resident here for 50 years. We've spent a lot of money on our house over the years. We've won awards, we've won the decorating award. If you drive by my house, people stop and say, I love your decorating and everything, you know, for summer, for Halloween, whatever it is, for Easter. And this is what I gotta look at all the time and nothing happens. I've been, I've been going on, I've been going on this for months now. And every Monday morning, that's what that dumpster looks like. Because this building here between Cambridge and Sunnybrook, it's full of hairdressers and all of their business is Friday and Saturday. And on Sunday morning, that thing is overflowing. There's rats all over the place. I'm paying Rose exterminator to come in and get rid of the rats. There's squirrels, there's birds, there's everything tearing the stuff apart. They put stuff, they put garbage outside the building and a lot of that is because the dumpster is full and overflowing. I've talked to Jim about getting it emptied twice a week, but this guy's a scumbag, dirtbag landlord anyway. He owns four buildings, I think, here in Southfield and he's got trouble with all of them. He fired the guy that cuts his grass because he got somebody cheaper, except the grass got this high before it got cut after he fired the guy. If this guy had a building in Birmingham, this would not be allowed, okay? This guy'd be in jail or he'd have been cited or he'd been to court. Now I wanna know when this is gonna be fixed, okay? The other thing, if you look at it, the enclosure that he built for it was the cheapest enclosure he could build. It's falling apart. They had two boards holding up the side of it. You know, everything he does is half ass or cheap. Now I'm tired of this, okay? I pay taxes and nothing happens, okay? Now what's gonna happen? Now I understand he's suing the city. Now I don't know, Scott, what's the suit about?
Actually, we'll get to that later, but the suit has been dismissed.
It has, okay.
So.
Why can't this be fixed? That's what I wanna know.
I thought that.
And the thing is, is he's been ticketed and he's been cited and he doesn't even show up. He pays the tickets because the ticket's probably 50 or 100 bucks or something and it's cheaper for him to pay the ticket than to get the thing fixed. The building I know has been cited for violations. There's a lot of people in there that don't have permits to be in the building. There's businesses in there that are not zoned for what the building is zoned for. Why doesn't anything happen? You know, I've been fighting this for over a year now, longer than that, really.
So.
What's gonna be done?
Scott, what would be our next line? Because, and I know you've been here quite often regarding it and.
Well, this is a part of a larger issue, a larger ongoing issue with, actually with a lot of the buildings, a lot of the commercial buildings in the city where this particular property owner did have a lawsuit pending against the city up until last Wednesday where there was a moratorium in place that the city could not take enforcement action on those buildings. There was an order signed with a circuit court judge, an injunctive order preventing us from proceeding with actions that we had started. That case has subsequently been dismissed, like I said, as of last week. And Jim Wright, our code officer, is working with the property owner right now, scheduling inspections of these buildings and providing him with lists of things, code violations that need to be brought up to code. So this is not, this is one of them. It's not going unnoticed, but it is one of them that is on the list that he has been presented with. And it's something that hopefully we can achieve some compliance through court enforcement.
Not hopefully, Scott, I want it fixed. I want it out of there. Otherwise, you know, I'm gonna send the bill for Rose exterminator to the city and let them pay it.
Well, what the procedure the city has is they have identified, like I said, identified many issues with a lot of these properties and brought them to the attention of the property owner. They're working with the property owner to bring these buildings into compliance and everything up to code. And if that's not done, then what the city will have to do is seek orders that either force the property owner to make the improvements or the city to make them and then assess the cost to the property owner's taxes. And that's how, that's how that dumpster enclosure got built, was the city had an order forcing him to build it or the city would have built it.
And you know, he put, he put the dumpster up, just dumped it there one day. When there was no pad for it, there was no concrete pad for it. And then it had to be taken out.
Right.
And then he built the thing. Everything that he does is, you know, he doesn't care. He doesn't live in Lathrop. He doesn't care about anybody here.
Can we find out where he is on the list? Where he is on the list and, because this could be a potential problem for, and I think we talked about it before, for, you know, with rats. It could be a potential problem for.
By the way, I went to the Oakland County Health Department today and reported that also to them, that, you know, that they got an environmental problem and a health problem. So, you know, whether they'll put some pressure on them or not, I don't know.
Can someone follow up with Jim? Like what Councilwoman Stallings is saying? Follow up with Jim to find out if this could be put at the top of the list? Because this is not the first time that we've heard, I know it's not the first time I've heard about it. And then top of the list and then a weekly follow up with what is going to be done. So you don't have to keep coming back because you will get a weekly follow up. So if you make sure we have your address or your email address, that way you will always be in the know of what we're doing.
Yeah, this, one of the things that I think whether he agreed to was that the dumpster would be emptied twice a week. It gets emptied now Wednesday in the middle of the night, okay? He hasn't done that as far as I can see, okay? So.
And the first thing is probably, is just to ask Jim to call him and ask him to keep his word on doing that. And then. I'll follow up with Jim on this. And if you would give that information to the administrator?
You can put my cellphone on there too. It's 248.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you'll get it fixed, right?
We'll get it fixed.
I'm gonna try my hardest and make sure that this doesn't have, I have your other stuff still in my possession.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, I would. So I have something that I was going to bring up because I just want everyone to realize that I don't go, it's not unnoticed of what people do. And I thought about it that, it's been one year ago that we went through a whole lot of changes regarding city council and things that happened. So I bought something for two people. So Pam, can you come up here, please? Yvette?
I wanted to say from the bottom of my heart that you all kept your heads. You all did your absolute best when we had not a lot of people to help us. And I really appreciate the job that you both are doing and the job that you did.
We do, we do. We appreciate you all.
No tears, that was. So third thing. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be like Mr. Batchelor, Meryl Blediyan, I'm back. I agree with what he said. I didn't even have to see the pictures. Dumpster situations in this city are atrocious. And like he said, if it was any other city, it would be cited. And I know Jim Wright tries to do his best, but I think all of us that end, that live in areas where there are dumpsters that are in our view, it's embarrassing. It really is. And it is an environmental issue. We've got the groundhogs that are running around and they've got traps around those areas and. But that wasn't the reason I came. The reason I came was because of rain. And on April 15th, we had rain, a lot of rain. And I had power, but my basement had water. Did you give your address? No, I didn't. 17656 Roseland. So there was water in my basement. It started out small in the floor drain. I have, a few years ago, put a lot of money into my basement with waterproofing, internally and externally. So my basement is waterproofed. I really shouldn't have an issue, but the issue in the end was that there was grease dumped into the sewer system. And that grease, I believe, was a result of olgas. I'm not sure, but I think that that was the end result. That's my presumption because Jersey Mike's doesn't fry anything. Olgas does and it usually smells. So there's pictures that the city got when they opened up the manhole and saw that there was grease there. This is not the first time. They've had, it's happened several times before. And it causes the water to back up into the sewer system and into the basement of the residents on Roseland. And I believe this time, there were six or seven people that were impacted on our street. So I want to know what is going to happen besides citing that building or those businesses? Because I never know what the citation is for, the amount that it is for. It needs to be looked at to see if that can be increased because until something is done in a more drastic measure, they're gonna continue to do that. And if they say they already have some company come in and suck out the grease from their building, that's true because they've done it at 11 o'clock at night and I can hear it. So there is an outlet on the side of that building, in the back of that building, that they hook up to and they suck the grease out. But it's not enough because it's going into our sewer system and it's causing issues into residential basements and that's an environmental issue. There's damage caused to our basements. The items are lost, the flooring is lost. The amount of hours taken to really be, to clean out the water, having to go buy wet vacs, call the plumber, I'm not getting reimbursed for that. I'd like to get reimbursed for that. But I wanna know, besides everybody looking at each other, what are we, what is going to happen to prevent this from happening again? You want businesses here, you want restaurants, you want this. If our sewer system can't maintain whatever is happening or they're adding to our troubles, I don't want their business here. They can go someplace else. Because they're not helping us. So I'm looking to see what's gonna happen.
Can you give the update of Roseland?
We do have an update.
Okay.
Yes, we did have the line inspected and did determine that that building is the source of the grease in the system. We can't say specifically it's any one business because they have a shared line leading from it. So the building inspector is issuing citation to both the building owner and the manager of the building. And we also have a meeting coming up with the city attorney with them as well to talk about how can the situation be remediated? Because as you indicated, they do have a grease trap, but obviously it's not adequate for what's happening. The flaw's not in the sewer system itself as in regards to what's being, what's entering the system.
Because this happened in August of 2016 too. So it continues to happen. And I'm tired of coming home, looking downstairs in my basement anytime it rains and thinking there's gonna be water there. My sump pump works and that saved me. My sump pump works, and that saved me, but it didn't save me a hundred percent. I can take other approaches to doing it, but it's costing me money. They need to be paying for these things.
So, when is the meeting? Or you don't have the date yet?
Uh, June first.
Yes, Friday. Next week, Friday.
So, um...
So, how do we follow up?
Is there a citing in addition to, well, I know you're following up, but what's, what's the agenda? What's the recourse that we'd be pursuing? Well, they, they are being cited for violating city ordinance for discharging grease or allowing grease to flow into the sewer system. So, tha, that's what the purpose of the meeting is, is to go over the, the cameras, the, the footage from the cameras that the city had the lines inspected, and then come up with a solution to prevent that from happening in the future.
So, who's that with? Is it with the property owner, or is it with each of the tenants?
Ultimately, the responsibility falls on the property owner.
So, that's who the meeting's with?
Yeah. So, does the resident have any recourse, um, on the property owner's insurance? Uh, that would be a, a private, potential private cause of action. I just, uh, I suspect what they, they would direct them to their own homeowner's insurance, and then their homeowner's insurance would pursue, um, a claim against the insurance company for the property owner.
Well, I'm not gonna claim a plumber's services against my homeowner's insurance, or a wet vac against my homeowner's insurance. I know there is another resident that is pursuing it, but I don't have a rider on my basement to go after those things as she does. So, you know, it, my flooring needs to be replaced, too. But I'm not doing it because it's, it's an expense, and why should I? Because it's gonna happen again. I'm not a fool for that.
So, Scott, from a city's perspective, the citation amount regarding businesses such as this, and violations such as, such, such as this, what can we, what can we do to adjust the, uh... What is the citation? Yeah, what is the citation?
Yeah, I've never heard the number.
Um, let me see if there's, I don't know that the, it's, the citation amount would be determined by, by the district court judge. I'm just looking right now to see if, if we have a scheduled fine for it. The city can recoup the city's cost, the cost of inspection, the cost of the engineers writing their reports. The city can't recover private costs, so the cost of your wet vac, the cost of your flooring replacement. That's why I said those, those costs would be, would be dealt with a civil matter where you would pursue it against the property owner. But the city can't recoup your costs for you. The city can recoup its costs, and that would be part of, part of the citation.
So, when you have to go to the city of Southfield and borrow their equipment because ours doesn't work, or we don't have it readily available, those are things that you can bill to him?
The, the city's cost and, yes, and remediating, uh, the blockage, the city can pass those, those actual costs along to, to the property owner.
And that's on top of the citation?
Yeah.
And, um, is it not, I, I know what you said, that we, we can't provide anything directly to the homeowner, but can it come up in the conversation that you're having, uh, with the property owner? About the damages, uh...
It's, it's not appropriate for the city, yeah, but it's, it's inappropriate for the city to try to collect on behalf of the private residences, cause it's not, it's not in our ordinance. Like I said, the, the...
I didn't say collect.
No, but, or even...
Make note of it.
Yeah, I mean, you, I'm certain they're aware that there were damages to residents, uh, and that they...
I don't know.
But if, that they're, they may be aware of it, but if we are, if we, even if we just make a point of saying something that we're very much aware, I mean, they may be aware, may not be aware, may not think it's a big deal, cause we're not saying anything about our residents. I know that we cannot, um, represent them...
You can't represent them.
But we can certainly say that we're concerned about what's happening with our residents.
Yeah, we'll absolutely, we will bring that up, that, that this has caused damage. But like I said, I, I would encourage the, you know, the residents to get, get together as a group.
Oh, I've tried, yeah.
And, and, you know, hire an attorney or, or approach an attorney about, uh, filing a civil, a civil nuisance action against the property owner.
I know who he is, he's...
That will get his attention a lot faster than any city citation. Especially if he's filing a court.
But it's known.
So, is there a way, I mean, maybe we could take it a step further. So, um, there's a cost associated with writing that citation, right? So, I don't know what that is, and the judge would determine that. Is there a way we can tie that in to, say, you know, EPA violations? Because you're basically dumping grease into the sewer system that could pollute thousands of gallons, or, or clog thousands of gallons. Any EPA violations, those charges would have to originate from the state, the State Attorney General's office. So, that's not something under our jurisdiction that we could charge him with. I did just find it's a, the first fine is to, a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars each subsequent violation, fines not less than five hundred dollars. So, this is, uh, this is a subsequent violation for them, so it'd be a, not less than...
So, for five hundred dollars, it's no big deal to him, really? Five hundred dollars is nothing compared to ten thousand dollars.
So, the city, we can submit a request to the Attorney General regarding EPA violations?
I mean, can't, isn't there, this is also tied into Oakland County Health, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, can't we do something with the Health Department that this has now gone into residential basements? And there's no point of having a finished basement, that adds no value when it continues to get clogged up and backed up because of businesses in this city. I might as well sell a house without a basement, because that's what it is.
So, what is our true obligation from the city's perspective? It's to, it's to, well, exactly what we're doing, cite them under our local ordinance. Uh, we've scheduled a meeting, Charles already scheduled that. And, and we're, we're going to meet with them about, about remediation to pre, hopefully prevent it in the future. I understand that we, you know, uh, we can't make any guarantees or assurances of that, but like I said before, it's strongly encouraged the residents to get together and pursue a civil action against the property owner, because that, that will get their attention more than a five hundred dollar fine. Uh, if, you know, the residents, you pull your damages together, I'm certain it's several thousands of dollars, uh, that, that, like I said, that will certainly gather their attention much quicker, much faster than what...
Against the property owner.
Against the property owner.
I agree. But I, I agree with that, totally. I agree what you're saying. But I still think that he should know that we know, so that...
Yeah, I don't think there's any question that, I think he's aware that, you know, he said the fact that he's already been contacted and, and has been cited for it, so... Yeah, I would recommend that you do file a report with the Attorney General and cite that. And you, once you get the report, once you get the final report from the, you know, the grease...
I think that's available, I think one of the neighbors already has that report with a picture attached.
Okay, so...
Great.
Individually, you can file reports within the Attorney General's office. So, and you can, you can cite each report number. So, if you're going in, if you're the third person, you can say, you could reference the other reports that are already there, so...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Good luck.
You also had a, a question about the increase of fees?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay, so restaurateurs, they have the ability to pollute. This is a perfect example, right? If you're frying or cooking, and let's just say the grease truck doesn't show up this week, and you have a lot of grease in there, and you need fresh grease to make french fries, what are you gonna do with that extra grease? And I think that's the case we're looking at.
So, are you looking to have a different fee schedule for restaurants? Or, or, you know, cause this is a fee schedule that's for all businesses, correct?
Correct, this for, well, this, I don't know how many other businesses use grease interceptors other than restaurants, but... Right now, we have two, well, three.
But go ahead.
But that, this is the fee schedule for, uh, under our grease interceptor ordinance.
Okay. So, to increase that, that is a, um, to increase the, the fees?
Would be an ordinance amendment.
Is your answer? Definitely think we should look into it.
I do not have a problem with that.
I agree.
I, I would make it painful, because, you know, if you're just gonna open up the spigot and let it run down the drain, and not have any regard for residents, I just...
Especially if it happened two years ago.
Right, I mean, this is not the first time, so...
The thing of it is, it's not just the grease and the sewage system, it's the rodents that come about as a result of it. And that impacts a wider group of people that live in this area. So, it just perpetuates it.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Um, it's, uh, my honor to present to you guys, um, two of our officers tonight. Uh, I'm Miss Amanda Carmack.
Woo hoo!
She is an outstanding officer. She has been officially full-time with us, um, on April first. She was here as a part-timer a couple of months, and has really proven to be a great community police officer. She's reaching out, many residents already know her by first name.
Yep.
And, uh, she's setting the bar, uh, extremely high for the guys, so. She's doing great. We really appreciate her dedicated level of service. And secondly, uh, we have, uh, new Officer Jeremy Houston. Uh, Mr. Houston comes to us from Northville Township PD, uh, no, I'm sorry, North, Northville Township.
Northville Township.
Northville Township PD, where he spent ten years there. He, um, wealth of knowledge, and, uh, he'll also make a great fit here at the, like the Village Police Department.
His name again?
Yeah.
Jeremy Houston.
Perfect, yeah. My late clap, yay!
Mine, too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
All righty. Next, we are moving to the action reports, which I lost my place, so...
Public hearing.
Oh. Guys.
Just a little thing on the public hearing.
Yeah, my, uh, time is not equaling my numbers. So, we'll have the public hearing. Do we have to close the, uh, the city council meeting?
No.
No, I'm thinking of different, okay, so we have a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget?
Yep.
And that is, if anyone wants to, you're not, not, not yet.
I wasn't planning to.
Okay, now you're during the action, by the way. So, public hearing, if anybody wants to, uh, discuss the fiscal two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget?
Madam Mayor, for the audience, there is a summary sheet highlighting, um, some of the key points on the podium, if anyone would like a copy.
Anyone?
There's a copy of the budget on the podium.
Yeah.
Well, highlights, highlights.
Okay, that's my question, where do you find it?
Oh, okay.
(inaudible). Oh, still not at all happy, too. Here we go.
Sorry, we had to put you at work, but, you know. So, the hearing was opened?
Okay.
So, um, actually, I believe this is my first public hearing that I administered, so. Opened and closed now, right?
Opened, yeah, any, any comments? If none, then you can close it. Just note the time, it was open and closed.
It was open. Any questions?
Give me a second.
And now it is closed. Right. Okay, so what do we do? So, now we're gonna move on to the, um, action items, which is the approval of the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen street projects.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to prevent a, present an overview?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um, if you recall, you had two study sessions in regards to this item, um, April sixteenth and May seventh, to discuss the street projects. Uh, the recommendation is to include in the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen street project budget for the Rackham Triangle, which is two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. There is a fourteen thousand and thirty-five, fourteen thousand, thirty-five dollar reimbursement from Oakland Par, Oakland County as part of the local road improvement program, which is also on the agenda. And then for the, um, the two Roseland sections, for the total project cost, be three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, less the reimbursement for a total project cost net of three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So, that's before you, for your approval.
Can we make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution affirming the fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen street projects.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? So, the Rackham, um, triangle, again, is that little triangle that is, just so everyone knows, can you, you see it?
No.
Nope.
Left, that one.
That one.
No, left, go left.
Go left?
Left, that's right. That should be it.
No.
No.
Go right.
It's this one.
Right there.
Yeah, this is it, that's what I thought.
Rainbow circle?
Yeah.
And Rackham meet.
So, that's gonna be the first one, and then the other one is Roseland, which is from...
Way up there in Southfield.
Up there. To there, and there. See it? So, everybody knows where they'll be affected at. Okay. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Next one is to, uh, motion to adopt fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget. City Administrator?
Mayor and council, you have before you the recommended fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget and the associated resolutions. In summary, on page twenty-one of the budget document, um, the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen mileage rate is projected to be twenty-one point eight zero zero six, that's a reduction from last year, because of the Headley rollback, which was twenty-two point two three, four three mils. The general operating mil, mileage will be seventeen point nine five seven one, refuse two point eight four three five, library, one mil. No mileage relative to the debt service. The general fund, which is on page thirteen of your binder, it reflects general fund res, revenues of approximately four million, as well as expenditures of approximately four million. It's a balanced budget by a mere two thousand dollars, but it is balanced. Government services, the eighteen, nineteen expenses, is a slight increase of eighty-two thousand, so that expense amount is five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Those services include outside agencies such as the library, building inspections, engineering, planning, cable, TV. We will be examining, um, those contracts to look for increased efficiencies of service enhancements, and if appropriate, also looking for alternate service providers. The administration, there is an expense reflected of five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. There, it includes a three percent wage increase, and those increases will not be automatic on a certain date of July first, but it actually be based on successful performance evaluations. The police department has the creation of a sergeant position, and there is a recommendation relative to a salary adjustment for the treasurer. Um, as you recall, there was a, um, a supplemental relative to them having the role of interim city administrator. So, there, that is being adjusted, but also a reflection that she has assumed a number of responsibilities. So, that, um, is reflected in the budget. And the position of administrative assistant for the building department is currently vacant. We will leave it that way for a short period of time, so we have an opportunity to reevaluate the roles and responsibilities, and see if we may need to restructure the operations in the administration. Public safety, um, is a little over two million dollars and a little over fifty percent of the overall budget. Included in their budget is the purchase of a new vehicle, um, the vehicle maintenance, um, therefore is reduced by five thousand. And there is an increase in training for the police department of ten thousand dollars, so they will have additional in training. They have been, um, falling behind in that regard, so it's important that we get them properly certified and trained. There's also an increase related to the contract we have with Berkeley for the prisoner lockup. And the public services, uh, the expenses are a little over four million, and is primarily related to an increase in fees from SACRA of thirty thousand, four hundred. The recreation department, we have a slight decrease in both the revenues and the expenses, um, that's primarily because we have a new, um, director who's very excited. And we already had a great turnout for the first, um, food, what is it called?
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market. Farmer's market, um, we had a lot of new vendors as well as new participants, so she just brings a lot of energy and positive, um, outcomes, so we're looking forward to that. So we're looking forward to that continuing, and we're also having conversations with SMART relative to how we can utilize the SMART credits and hopefully even acquire a dedicated van. Under general contingencies and capital purchases, that amount in this budget is $239,520. It includes a $145,420 transfer to the local street fund and a $94,100 transfer to the capital reserves. Major streets, the, um, the funding from the state Act 51 funds is a slight increase of $5,237, also known as 1.27% increase from the state. Um, the total we should be receiving is $117,086. That's divided 75% to the major streets and 25% to local streets. The expenses, um, are a decrease from last year, but that's primarily because the Evergreen Road project was a part of the current year's budget. And there's also a transfer to local streets of $67,056. Under local streets, um, they're budgeted, as, um, we've already mentioned, the Rackham Triangle and Roseland for the project for the year. And the local streets also have a capital expenditure of 90,000 for the purchase of a dump truck. The water fund, the water main capital improvement program is at 500,000. That includes the two water main improvements along the East City border, Lincoln to Margate and the Santa Barbara area between 11 and 12 mile. The water rate has an increase of 1.92%, so the rate will be 38.38. And when combined with the sewer, the total rate will be 121.08. For the sewer fund, the rate will be 81.70 cents. $81.70, an increase of approximately 4%. That includes 100,000 for the sewer system maintenance, um, contracting with the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner for the operation of what we call the tank. Um, currently it's being handled by administrative staff. The debt service is pretty consistent with last year's slightly decrease, and that covers the sanitary sewer capital improvement bonds as well as the sewer revolving fund. And under capital improvements, it's 98,000 plus the 1,100 for the election equipment for the, for the clerk's office. It also includes computer purchases for the mayor and council, building security system, a projector for the community center, city hall updating, computers for administration and public safety, FOIA software and the police vehicle and outfitting. And then finally, the DDA, they have a fund balance of 1.2 million. They're using a little bit of that fund balance for the coming year, and that's primarily so that they can reinstitute two of their programs, the sign grant program and the facade grant program. And they also will be moving towards seeking certification for the main street program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year budget 2018-19.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Yes, I do. So for, um, and I'm sorry, I just noticed this, for under recreation.
Mm-hmm.
Did Molly's title change, or is she director now, or is she still coordinator? Just curious.
I call her director.
So be it. Um, the water main capital improvement plan is supposed to start, um, May 15th, but we're gonna look and see.
That was last week.
Now you're talking about the restoration.
Yes.
Restoration, yes.
May 15th was supposed to start, and, but we'll be looking into seeing when that is done. Okey dokey. Any other discussion?
Nothing that Cheryl's just, uh, did an excellent job at bringing this to us, and thank you.
And I definitely wanted to thank all of the staff. They've been very supportive. Um, this would have been an impossible task in six weeks. It started April 2nd. I highly recommend don't hiring someone just before you start the budget. But, but we managed, so.
Yeah. Note to self.
Excellent teamwork.
Yep. Definitely.
Okay.
Sure.
What is it really, local streets and the street plan, anything else that you know?
I'm sorry, didn't hear your question.
On the local streets and local street pro, the projects for the streets, what does that entail?
That's what we were talking about.
I know, but what does that mean? What does that physically mean? Does that mean resurfacing? What, what does that mean? Do you, or?
That the streets will be restructured as necessary depending on the degree of the degradation of the street.
Okay.
So the engineer has an assessment of the, um, of those sites, and he will be issuing bids, um, getting those responses.
So does that also mean like the sewers and things, sewage, the, the?
No, that's infrastructure.
That's infrastructure, so that's different, this is?
Yeah.
Just streaky.
It's separate.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Um, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next on the agenda is. Motion to approve the resolution for designating city administrator as a street administrator? Is that the next one?
So this is a standard requirement from the Michigan Department of Transportation that someone in the administration is identified as the person to which they, um, communicate, especially in regards to construction of roads. So the recommendation is that you designate, um, your city administrator, me, um, to be that person.
Aye. Do you have a motion? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
So you get all the information as far as, um, media publications, and then you communicate to the residents? Or how is, how's the role of the work?
Isn't that really media is when they have construction projects?
Oh, I see.
So that there is a point person.
Ah, okay. All right, thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next agenda item is the motion to approve a bid for SALT for the next two years with the option for three additional one-year extensions. City Administrator, once again.
Thank you. We received information from the city of Farmington Hills relative to the RFP they had for the purchase of SALT. Um, there is a consortium of which Latha Village has been a participant, and they have a really good rate, it's actually less than it, less than it was last year. So they have awarded it based on the prices that you see in your package, which I believe is $51.14 for the first year. Um, there's an increase of $1.52.67 for the second year. And then there is the option to renew for one-year periods for three consecutive years with a built-in 3% increase. So my recommendation is to, um, approve the bid and participate in the consortium.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, SALT bid.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to appoint two members to the planning commission.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a correction that the expiration date for those, um, is May 21, 2021.
It is actually at the bottom of the motion, it was just not on our.
Agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it was on something, it was not on here, though.
Okay. So if you recall, the, um, the city council had approved expanding the membership for the planning commission from five to seven members. And you have the applications, and forgive me if I mispronounced the last name, Cheryl Huleza.
Huleza.
Huleza. And Jason Hammond.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion?
Are we getting desperate?
I had to let him speak, so.
Yes, desperate for two more people on the board. I didn't have any to recover from.
I'm sure I'll get chastised later, so.
As you should.
Yes.
Um, all in favor, I mean, is there any more discussion? Hopefully not on that. Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Would you like to say an acceptance speech or something?
Yeah, actually, I would. So, uh, I'm Jason Hammond, 27590, California Southeast. And I guess the only statement I'll make is that I'm, uh, excited to have the opportunity to work. Working partnership with city council and the city staff to, you know, work to find ways to improve how we plan the development of our city on an ongoing basis in a way that is beneficial both to residents and to businesses that are conducting business in the city. Thank you. I'm excited for the opportunity, thanks for everything.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Careful of what you ask for.
You know, all kidding aside, we have some real visionaries on that board, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna see great things coming.
I didn't think this council was too bad with visionary.
Yeah, I was too. Yeah, I thought you did a good job. You guys did do a good job. You found the right people, so.
Well, I'm glad that you're happy.
Thank you.
Um, next, we have the appointment to the southeastern Oakland County Water Authority SACRA.
Mayor and Council, what you have before you is the annual recommendation, um, that is requested from SACRA in accordance to their Articles of Incorporation, and that is that you designate a representative and an alternate to the Board of Trustees for that board. This will be for the term beginning July 1, 2018. Uh, my recommendation is that, um, myself would be the representative and Ken Martin would be the alternate.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the following, the two appointments, Cheryl Mitchell and Ken Martin, to the SACRA.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the motion to appoint a representative and alternate to SACRA.
Mayor and Council, this is relative to the, um, the SACRA, which handles our leaves and recycling. And it's essentially the same thing, and this would be the appointment to serve on their Board of Trustees. And my recommendation is that, um, you would appoint me as the city administrator as a representative and Ken Martin as the alternate, and there is a resolution attached in your agenda packet.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Cheryl Mitchell as the representative and Ken Martin as the alternate for SACRA. Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next one is a motion to approve a resolution in support to, of the reinstatement of the state historic tax credit.
Mayor and Council, we received a communication from the Michigan Historic Preservation Network in regards to seeking support for House Bill 5178. And that bill would reinstitute the Michigan historic tax credits for the restoration of historic structures and buildings. And it's my understanding that there have been residents of Latha Village who have benefited from it in the past, so they're seeking support. And the resolution is included in your packet.
Um, do you have a motion? Can I have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and authorize the clerk to forward a copy of the adopted resolution to the Michigan Historic Preservation Network.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Does anyone have, um, any, is there a discussion? Yes, there is, I have a question about it. Um, so this is for homeowners that live in historical homes.
Yes.
Which the date of the historical home, do you know that off the top of your head? I used to.
Now, that I don't know.
Anyone?
How they're defined.
I do not know.
Jason.
Mary. Caroline.
That's a good question, though. Are, are all of them have the plates on them? I know when I was walking the neighborhood, they had plates on.
Yeah, I want to say 1929. I don't know why that's sticking out in my head, but I think I'm making that up.
Yeah, we should find out.
I was just curious.
It was discontinued several years back, that's all I know, and.
And what does that mean? Do you get your house renewed?
You get some sort of tax credit of some kind, some kind? I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm sure this is, I'm sure it's a little bit different than what we used to do.
There will be a lot of residents that, a few residents that will be very happy that this is reinstated, 'cause I can remember back when I was walking the neighborhood, a couple of, uh, complaints came that they never got their plate and that they weren't getting it. So this is a great, this is a, it would be great to see a list of our historic homes and to see, uh, what does come with this, um, this recognition. So I, I think it's great.
Well, you have to play, pay for the plate.
We pay for the plate?
Yeah, you have to pay for that.
Okay, so we need more details then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but they wanted it, but for some reason, like Ian said, um, it was stopped, so.
Yeah.
I like, I appreciate this.
Can you, um, find out what the date is on the home, or?
When they become eligible, assuming that is adopted?
Maybe we should play that in a lottery, 1929, 'cause I don't know why that, that's sticking out in my head so much.
It's the year my mom was born.
That's what I was thinking.
I know.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Okay, so is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And now this, uh, wait a minute, I have one more, but I don't have one more on the agenda. Is that right?
There is.
Local road improvement?
Yeah. I don't have an eye on mine.
You don't?
I have one.
Nope, I guess my, I was gonna stop. Okay, on this one, I have an eye, okay? Next one. Um, approve, we need to have a motion to approve the resolution to, approve the resolution to approve the cost participation agreement for the 2018 Oakland County Local Roads Improvement Matching Fund Pilot Program.
Mayor and Council, I, well, I'm thrilled to, I also mentioned that Dr. Commissioner Quarles is here, and we say, received a letter from her just last week announcing that we are a recipient of the application to the county for the local road improvement, their matching fund program, which will, um, provide some cost sharing of the $14,035 for the projects that we already mentioned in regards to the Triangle as well as the Roseland. So thank you, Commissioner Quarles.
Thank you.
And you have before you the resolution that approves our participation in the cost sharing agreement and authorizing me a city administrator to sign those documents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Or can I have a motion?
Yes. So, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the cost participation agreement with, uh, Oakland County.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So now, which is awkward for me to bring this around, but it's a presentation, um, by Oakland County Commissioner Dr. Nancy Quarles to me. Awkward, but, um, it was back in April? Yeah, so. I'm Quarles. I'll cry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me to come and give the, um, presentation to Mayor Garrett. Actually, it was really back in March when the county was saluting women for their positions and the things they're contributing to Oakland County. And Mayor Garrett was one of the women that was selected. It was three women within Oakland County. And unfortunately, with her commitment to the city, she was unable to, um, attend. But I wanted to present you with your proclamation from the county on the works that you're doing, and your works are beginning to contribute to Oakland County as a whole, so we certainly appreciate that. Speaking of a visionary, I remember sitting through one of your presentations recently where you said, uh, the city of Latha Village is becoming a destination city, and I see that you're moving very much to that. I won't read the whole proclamation, but I just want to pull out a couple of, um, paragraphs in here in which, uh, the county wants to, um, join with your family and friends and your colleagues, and thank you for your dedication in serving as the mayor of the city of Latha Village, as well as your countless and other contributions to the community. And we further congratulate you on all your professional and personal accomplishments. This proclamation will be issued to you. This proclamation will be issued to you by myself, County Commissioner Nancy Quarles, Commissioner Janet Jackson, and the Chair of the Oakland County Board of Commissioner, Michael Genjel. And if you want to join me up here, I would be more than happy to give you your proclamation and. Let you know how we certainly appreciate what you're doing and how you're doing the things to move forward with a great city of Latha Village.
Thank you.
I'm taking two.
Thank you.
I gotta zoom, I gotta zoom, it's okay, one more.
In front of the podium.
There you go. Okay, smile. One, two, three. Oh, that's not taking, hang on one second.
One more.
And here, I'm the photographer in the background. There we go, got it.
I was gonna say, let a woman do what you need me to do.
There, I got four.
You got enough, thank you. Thank you. I'll send it to you, I've got six.
Okay, thank you. I won't say that my basement had flooded, so all of my stuff kinda. I relate, trust me, that's why I relate about that, most of my stuff was on the floor. Placks were on the floor, it got damaged, so. Next, we will, thank you again, I appreciate it. The city administrators, I have it on.
Okay, there you go, sorry.
City administrative report, thank you for keeping me on my toes.
Just want to reiterate that we are very thrilled to have Amanda Carmack as our new full-time patrol officer and welcome Jeremy Houston as our part-time patrol officer, welcome again. And both officers, as you know, were here in attendance today. Dan, if you recall, has already accepted a new position as a patrol officer in the city of Detroit. So we wish him well, and as I mentioned before, we'll leave that position vacant for the time being with everyone pitching in so that we can look at how we may want to reorganize. I had a meeting with Brian Colburn, who's the engineer for the Oakland County Water Resource Commission in regards to how we could move forward with contracting with them for the operations and maintenance of the sanitary retention tank. So with the adoption of the budget, I'm looking forward to trying to get that finalized. And a planning, a meeting of the Planning Commission was held on May sixteenth, and they made a recommendation. They're making a recommendation to the full committee. Normally, that would be included in your budget, because we were all there, that what is included in this budget is actually what's being recommended, so it's consistent. May twenty-eighth, again, is Memorial Day, and city hall offices will be closed and observance. The Latha Village Police Department received a certificate of appreciation from the Oakland County Health Network for some of their work in the jail diversion programs, I wanted to again applaud them for the work that they're doing. And I had it up to myself. Officer Becker is being recognized as a first responder by the Southfield Latha Optimists Club on Wednesday, so I will be there as a part of that presentation.
That's at seven-thirty?
I believe so.
In the morning?
I didn't look at that. I had assumed PM.
Oh, no. It's AM.
Oh, maybe somebody else is going.
They're optimists, they get up early.
All right. I attended the meeting of the Oakland County Managers Association, and we heard a presentation from the Road Commission for Oakland County, some of the improvements that they're doing, including what we saw recently going south on Southfield Road, where they're really just giving the surface of the street to do a quick repair. It lasts a few years, but at least it's a temporary fix while they're, like all of us, are trying to find long-term funding for these road improvements. I also attended the Southfield Public Library Celebration along with Commissioner Quarles as they were talking about the Potawatomi.
Yeah.
Indians and their relationship to this area, which is very exciting. And the initial plans are already underway for the sixty-fifth anniversary of Latha Village. So anyone who's interested in volunteering, participating in that, we hope to make it a really exciting event for the entire community and the region to come and celebrate all of our accomplishments. The Southfield Public Schools Seeking Fund Village election was held on May eighth, and it did pass. I did hear about, by having received an official notification, that they have appointed their superintendent, so I'm waiting for official word on that. And, let's see, May eleventh, the DDA had, is, they had a meeting, and they're scheduling a meeting in June to talk about their strategic planning. So that date is to be determined. The farmer's market was kicked off with a great success, there was a lot of good food. I'm looking forward to the barbecue restaurant that will be opening soon across the street, and there was a lot of wonderful things. The Cajun popcorn is hot, just so you know. But it was, it was a great event, lots of fun stuff. The actual farmers will be coming about the middle of June when their crops come in, so, but there's a lot of crafts and activities and ice cream and food and lots of fun things to participate and share. The Southfield Corridor cleanup will need to be rescheduled, it was rained out that day. Somebody didn't want to go cleaning out the ditches in the thunderstorm.
It was rescheduled for.
Do they have a date?
Yeah, June third, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm beyond thrilled to talk about the Hortus Gardens pop-up garden shop, it is outstanding. If you haven't been there yet, please go by and go by often. They have some of the most amazing flowers and plants and trees, they have a pineapple plant. Haven't killed it yet, it's been two weeks almost, so I'm thrilled. And the Tim Miller at the State Farm, they had their grand opening this past week, so we welcome them as our new business.
They're gonna have another one also, from what I heard.
Okay.
Because they're part of the Southfield Chamber, so Southfield Chamber wants to have another grand opening.
All right, the more the merrier. And the Angelus Fashions, right across the street on Southfield, that was the main reason I came here, because they're my favorite store in Hamtramck. They're having their grand opening on June first at four PM. And many of you already have received an invitation to the memorial service for Betty Ann Stone, which will be Friday, the twenty-fifth, at two PM in the community room. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, and I will say about Hortus Gardens, it is much more than what I thought it was going to be. I really thought it was just gonna be some stands, but it is actually a garden center, so I think that's what it should really be called. Plus, what I really love is that Ed will tell you what plants go together, opposed to you just going and trying to figure out some things. And I have a stiletto shoe with succulent plants in the inside, because I can't kill, yes, I can, but not supposed to be able to kill succulents. But, thank you, I appreciate that. So next. The attorney?
We already kind of alluded to it during the public comment section, but my update was going to be letting everyone know that the Dow Real Estate lawsuit against the city and corresponding injunctions have been dismissed, no costs to the city. So we are continuing moving forward with enforcement on those properties. But the pending lawsuit that's been hanging over our heads and kind of limiting what we can do and the speed with which we can do it is now gone, so we, our code officer is, is in contact with the property owner, and we are moving forward.
I'd just really like to see a, maybe at each study session of what was done for like, because I know for sure about the dumpsters that's been going on for at least the last three years or so.
Yeah, and those are some of the, I'll call them the lower hanging fruits, that, things that can be knocked off the.
Exactly.
It's quite a lengthy list of things that need to be done, and some of them are more achievable sooner, as opposed to some of them are gonna require some major renovations to those properties.
But is it also where we can, I don't know, that's ordinance or not, about when the trash could be picked up? Because like I said before, right up here on Southfield, they put their trash up against our light pole, and when you're going south is on the right-hand side. Light pole. Is it what?
On Sunday nights or something?
Yeah, and so, yeah, yeah. And so.
It's Saturday, sorry, it's Saturday.
And some of it's torn up on Monday?
Yeah, note that, note the address, and we're not supposed to do that, so we'll.
Okay. So just those type of updates, so that also the residents know that we heard that we're doing something about it. So thank you, I'm sorry, I might have cut you off.
No, that's all right.
Oh, okay, thank you. Reports from the boards, commissions, committees? So.
Planning Commission, so we had our last meeting, and we are in the process of doing a zoning ordinance health checkup, which started before I was on the Planning Commission, where we're reviewing a lot of the ordinances to make some improvements. There's three that were, that we discussed in detail, which will be, it'll be a public hearing at our next Planning Commission meeting on May twenty-ninth, which is next Tuesday, I believe. And those, those three are changes to the wireless communication ordinance, which basically is bringing our city ordinance to be consistent with state and federal ordinances, ordinances. There's a corner clearance ordinance, so when you're coming to a corner, how much of that corner has to be visible so that drivers can see the oncoming traffic. And so we've updated that, and then the last one was a, an amendment to remove a provision in our ordinance that allows for referendum, which goes contrary to state law. And so that's, that's been updated as well, so there'll be a public hearing, as I said, on the twenty-ninth, and you're all invited to attend.
Thank you.
We're actually gonna do two of those.
Oh, I do two of those?
Yeah, the clear corner one, we left off, because there was more information that we wanted from the planners, so.
Okay. And SIMCOG update?
I have none as of yet, I have, but I am on the task force for, not only the SIMCOG, what's going on with the roads and everything, but on the task force, the skills building task force. And we'll be meeting pretty soon, so I will have an update the next time that we, that we meet.
Okay. Aren't we supposed to, someone, who was on the alternate of someone?
Right, I believe they are requesting that whoever is going to be the alternate is designated by end of June.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you wanted one of the members right here to be the alternate, and if not, then I would gladly step forward to be an alternate. If that's appropriate.
It is, I think.
Oh, I was talking about you.
I'm on Parks and Rec.
What does that have to do with it?
I think what they.
I don't have a problem doing it, I just, I thought it was already somebody.
I just forgot, I have something else for you.
The meeting that I had with them, they did request Cheryl, or they did request that you would be an alternate when I could not, could not go, so there was a request on the table for that.
Okay.
If you don't, if you want it, I don't want to take it from you.
No, you can do that, because I have something better, since you're so willing to be on something. So remember we were talking about someone being, yeah. Being a liaison between the city council and the Southfield Board of Education. It goes hand to hand with Parks and Rec somehow, some way, I'm just trying to figure it out. So perhaps, you know, once every quarter to go or invite them here, but somehow having some type of conversation, because the way, personally, the way that I found out about the new superintendent is not the way I would think I would find out about it, but, or for us to find out about it. So just if we had a liaison, or maybe you set something up where someone comes here, so you don't have to go there all the time.
I will set it up either way. I, I will say something, though, and I don't want to be offensive, but should I be a good cop or a bad cop?
So, do you want to whisper to me before you say a loud word? Go ahead, Ian.
Because we, we actually had discussed that in a study session, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay, good, thank you. Please write that down and make sure that's in a minute.
I got it right here. I told you you'd be happy to do it.
I know. Got to merge them together, but what is, what is it that you would like to say, sir?
No, actually, for Parks and Rec, so Molly's super busy, so after the food truck activation and music in the park and, and the farmer's market is off and running, then we need to collectively get together and, you know, reformulate our committee, because we actually had a handful of people that actually participated in Parks and Rec, so we need to reformulate that. So I won't put that on our list, because she's really busy right now, but I would say probably the third week of June, I'll try, I'll meet with her and then we'll establish an update for council.
Okay, that was not, that's the offensive thing you were gonna say?
No, no, no.
There's something else?
Good cop, bad cop, I was gonna say.
Oh, that was just what you were gonna say, though. Okay, I just want to make sure that, are you all set, did you have anything else?
I hope I didn't get too offensive there.
You had me scared, is there, anyone else have any, their unfinished business?
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out on May eighth and voted during the election. I really want to express my gratitude for all of the precinct workers. They come in at six AM and they don't leave until maybe nine PM. And they are always willing to help, and I just want them to know that, I really appreciate them. And we have our co-chair for our AV Board, absent voter counting board here in the office, I'm sorry, here in the chambers, Ms. Mary Moy. I just want you to know, I appreciate you all.
And if I'm not mistaken, you were the first city to report for the county, correct?
We were. Yes, we were.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other new business or unfinished business? Then I would take a motion, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.